Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled East Windsor Regional School District Board of Ed meeting. Written advance notice of this meeting was provided at least forty-eight hours ago. Such notice was provided, such notice provided the date, the time date and location of this meeting, and included the agenda to the extent it was known at the time. Notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with law. Minutes of this meeting are being kept by the Board Secretary and will be made available promptly to any member of the public requesting them from the Board Secretary at twenty-five A, Leshen Lane, Hightstown, New Jersey. Minutes of the, minutes will be provided at cost in accordance with board policy. Are there any board members present who believe this meeting to be in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act? There being none, we may proceed. In compliance with the fire code of the state of New Jersey, I call your attention to the emergency exits for this room, which are located behind in the audience and to our left and right. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C.
Having read the materials received, I move the agenda be approved as submitted.
Pull the board?
Yep.
Second. Pull the board, please.
Ms. Boojly?
Yes.
Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Laverty?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lans?
Yes. Item D.
Be resolved that the East Windsor Regional School District may hold two closed sessions at this meeting. These closed sessions concern personnel, HIV report of October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Minutes of these closed sessions will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
Please pull the board.
Ms. Boojly?
Yes.
Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Laverty?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lans?
Yes. We will now move on to our student representative report.
Good evening, board members. We are excited to be back for this evening's board meeting. Starting off our report on a positive note, the Hightstown Marching Band Team won the state championship this past Saturday and had an incredible undefeated season. This is an incredible accomplishment and a first in Hightstown Marching Band history.
Recently, the Hightstown football team also won the Mayor's Cup and the Pito Cup, which are great achievements that demonstrate just how much effort they put in.
Last week, the high school experienced a power outage. Although it was unexpected, all the staff and students handled it extremely, extremely well and moved fast. Even though students weren't able to move out of their first period classes due to many of the hallways being dark, teachers and staff held fun activities to pass the time. Surprisingly, many good things came out of this experience. Teachers and staff were able to test the emergency lights and generators. Although it was not an ideal way to start the day, we are proud with how everyone handled it and being, and it being a good learning opportunity for staff and students.
At the last board meeting, some concerns were raised about our district's state testing report, and I'm glad to say that we're working with Mr. Vincent to find ways that incentivize students to give their full effort on the next exams.
The recently announced, they recently announced the September Athletes of the Month. Arlene Tour, a current junior, represented the Hightstown Girls Volleyball Team as the September Girls Athlete of the Month. Recently set a team-high record with a hundred forty-one assists, along with forty-one kills, thirty-seven digs, and seventeen aces. Our September Boys Athlete of the Month, Mateo Abadagallado. He first placed ninth out of two-hundred-ninety-six runners in the junior race at the Cherokee Challenge. He followed that up with, followed that up by winning the junior race at the Thompson Tomb Miler the week after in a race consisting of eighty-six junior runners. He ran the second fastest time of the four-hundred-fifth overall runners to race that day. Congratulations to both of you, and we wish you luck on the rest of your season.
An important way for the students to communicate with the student council is definitely the suggestion box, with the QR codes are now being placed around the school so that students can easily scan them and, and leave their suggestions, ideas, or concerns. Afterwards, the student council can bring these suggestions to administration.
The fall plays in full swing with the cast of this year's production of Clue rehearsing every, every day. We are, we are all excited to see our classmates take on the stage in new roles.
In terms of winter sports, basketball, wrestling, and swim are all starting soon, with interest meetings being held in the coming weeks. On top of that, the school musical will be announced soon, and we're excited to see the previews later this year.
Our senior team pep and peer group connection classes have officially started, with PGC having their first outreach with the freshmen last week and teen pep having their first outreach tomorrow. We are all excited to further work and teach this year's freshman class.
This Thursday is Haunted Hallways, which is a fundraiser where clubs and sports teams from Hightstown decorate the school and hand out candy to trick-or-treaters. It's a great community outreach event for organizations like robotics, DECA, Coders Union, Class Council, and many more. And speaking of robotics, on November first, it's the FTC team's first competition of the season, which is going to be at Homedale High School, where students have, have to score as many points as they can with this year's robot design.
With the early college application cycle ending this weekend, the senior class is relieved to have a break from essay writing. All students are greatly anticipated, greatly anticipating for the upcoming fall break. Students are excited to sleep in throughout the week.
This concludes our report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now proceed to our student safety data update.
Okay, just do a quick introduction. So I'll be asking Ms. O'Brien, our supervisor of counseling, just to provide an update. This is reporting period two from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As I talked about at the meeting on October thirteenth, school districts are required each year to report twice during the year regarding incidents that need to be recorded in the student safety data system. So this is actually kind of a rewind to January twenty-five through June twenty-five. Just as a quick reminder, probably stealing a little bit of Lauren's thunder here, but the incidents that are required to be reported are incidents of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, bullying, weapons offenses, substance offenses, restraint, seclusion, and any other incident leading to student removal from school, and hip training and programs. So with that said, I'll turn things over to Ms. O'Brien.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I also want to mention the report period two, so I do give this presentation twice per year. Report period two is actually the longer of the two report periods. So this is a six-month period where report period one is a four-month period. So as Mr. Daniel said, this is required by DOE. We report twice a year. Here are our categories. This is an overview of all of the categories, and all of the buildings are on the left-hand side. So you can take a quick look at that, and I'm going to go through each category. We have a comparison for twenty-four, twenty-five report period two versus twenty-three, twenty-four. So we'll start with violence, and usually I'd just like to provide a quick snapshot of incidents that fall into this category and what we are required to report under the violence category. Generally speaking, we do see the majority of these incidents in the six-twelve. You know, bigger students, so it's more common that we might see something like a fight at the six-twelve level. The next category is vandalism, and you can take a look and just see what some of the incidents that we report on this category, I think most commonly might be damage to property. And our numbers, again, only at the six-twelve level for the vandalism category. Okay, now we get to substances, and this is an important thing to look at, what we actually report under the substance category. Primarily, the fact that tobacco is not reportable. So students that have, that are found to be in possession of tobacco in the buildings, this is not a report that comes under substance. If you take a look between report period two for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and report period two for last school year, you'll see a decrease in substance. I really want to point out at Creps, we saw a pretty large decrease from sixteen to six. One of the things that you might recall that we talked about last year is our vape sensors in the restrooms. And it definitely appears as though the vape sensors is, at this point, maybe a deterrent for students using vapes and substances in our restrooms. Okay, for weapons, on the right-hand side, you'll see what constitutes an incident or a report of a weapon. We had one incident at Creps. And next we get into our harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases that are confirmed. So if you take a look, I think the, the stat that actually stands out there is also at Creps, we went from nine in twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty cases in twenty-four, twenty-five. I did do a little digging to try to figure out what, you know, maybe was going on towards the end of last year. And I did find that there were a few cases that actually involved some of the same students. So there was some conflicts going on with some student groups that, that resulted in one or two cases, you know, with the same group of students happening. So that was towards the end of last year at Creps. What we find in terms of those cases at Creps specifically, you know, it's, it's the developmental level of the students. Unfortunately, it's a lot of verbal comments that students are making. You know, we might say it's something like name-calling or teasing, but unfortunately, some of the things that they're saying as they get to us, they are incidents that we do need to report as HIV. So now we get into talking about what do we, what do we do about these incidents that happen in our buildings? One thing that we've been talking about for the last few years, actually, in terms of discipline, is really working to be consistent with our consequences. So that will be in, in the buildings. You know, when you look at six-twelve and there's an assistant principal by grade level, we're looking for consistency in the buildings across the grade levels of consequences based on different types of incidents, but also having conversations K-12 amongst the different buildings to make sure that we have some level of understanding and that we have some consistency there. We do have some restorative practices. We are working on implementing restorative practices K-12. So this September, we had a large group trained in restorative practices. All of the building administration, some supervisors were involved. We had some teachers, some counselors, just a variety of people trained in restorative practices, so we can hopefully implement that in our buildings. Also, we use in-school suspension as a consequence, and part of that is there's a counseling component to that. So there's a reflective piece for students to kind of process what happened, how to make a better decision moving forward. And also academic support can be provided during that time as well. So here's just a few more proactive and remedial measures, some things that are related to climate and culture as well. We do have some student mediation happening, conflict resolution. Usually that will happen with some students, counselor, and an assistant principal to work through and mediate an issue. We also had vaping presentations last year, middle school and high school. We also offered a parent session of that. Last year, we also participated in the New Jersey Department of Health Tobacco Survey to try to get some insights about our students and their tobacco usage at the high school. Okay, so now moving on to the ABS school self-assessment. So this is something that we engage in every year. Schools are required to go through a self-assessment and actually score themselves on various different categories related to the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. So I'll go through some of these. For core element one, we are grading ourselves on our programs, any initiatives that we're running. Core element two is training on HIP policy, and I'll, I'll give some examples of this later on. We are also looking to make sure that other staff in our buildings are being trained. Curriculum and instruction and observing things like the week of respect. We want to make sure that we have ABS anti-bullying specialists in every building which we do. Core element six is focused on reporting procedure. How easy is it? How accessible is it for students and staff to report incidents of HIV? Core element seven is the accountability piece on our investigation procedure. Are we notifying everyone that's involved? Core element eight is HIV reporting. So that just gives you a brief overview. These are our grades for this year for twenty-four, twenty-five. Just to give you an idea of how we arrive at all of these, there's a, there's a rubric, and there's different subcategories in each core element. The idea is that the building principal, maybe an assistant principal, the ABS, all sit down and talk about what we did really well last year and maybe where we might have a little bit of room for improvement. And then we arrive at a score for each core element, add up the score, and then these are the yearly scores that we are submitting for approval. and then these are the yearly scores that we are submitting for approval. These are our district anti-bullying specialists that are assigned to each building. And then our proactive and remedial measures look a little bit different for, for our ABS programming. You'll see that most of these are really focused on climate and culture. So every building has a school climate and safety team and the purpose of that team is to review discipline data, to review our HIB data, to look for trends. Is there anywhere where we need to provide more programming or more support that we're not currently doing? We run week of respect activities, red ribbon week, SEL lessons. We do still have the Stop It app, which is an anonymous reporting app that anyone can use and to, to report something. We also participated last year in the Rutgers School Climate Survey and we started as a team to dig through that data in the summer to take a look at different buildings and areas where we might need to improve. Always counseling is going to be a component following up to discipline and certainly for any HIBs confirmed, we want to make sure that we're supporting all the students involved. Just a few more, I just wanted to highlight for each building, some climate and culture initiatives that are currently happening. K-two is participating in the second year of Leader in Me. GNR is rolling out a new peer mediation program, which is really exciting. We took last year to train the students and this year it's, they're actually going to be doing the mediation. PLD has a wonderful community night, SEL night. I was really excited to be able to see that last year. So many people involved, so many people from the community. Everyone was having a great time. MHK has a principals council, so an opportunity for student representatives to meet with the principal. Also, starting with restorative circles, NHHS, just one thing to highlight is the Student Wellness Day. So this is just a quick list of the training that's available. All staff are required to do the GCN training. Trainings are held during faculty meetings. We do, do some training at new teacher orientation. Administrators are trained every summer. And ABS, the anti-bullying specialists do meet periodically throughout the year to discuss how things are going in their buildings, if they need any support, if they're seeing any trends, or if there's any programming that, you know, we feel based on the data, we need to work through. Okay, and that's my last slide.
Thank you, Lauren. Does anyone have any questions?
I have two. The, the Stop It anonymous reporting app is, could you describe how that's used? Obviously it can't be used for HIB reports because you need an actual individual to submit a report. But how is the Stop It app used or do you get data from it?
So often we will get, and we don't get a lot of them, so it's, I shouldn't use the word often. We do get, we do get a handful of them and it's a variety of different things. Sometimes it's a student who's just reaching out to say, hey, I think my friend needs some support or I had this conflict with a student. We have had a couple of cases where it is something that needs to be investigated as an HIB. We, students don't have to be anonymous. So, you know, there have been cases where students will provide their information and how to reach out to them so we know exactly who they are. We have had a couple that were, were anonymous that we were able to, based on the situation described and based on the counselors and the AP's knowledge of their students, we've been able to kind of piece together and figure out who those students are. Yeah, six-twelve.
Thank you. My second question is, could you describe the restorative circles, how that works, what it's, what it is?
Sure. We're, we're just getting started on, on that. I don't... I was there. You think so? Okay, yeah, so, so it is, it's a district-wide initiative. Part of the training, I think, was just like the, the initial piece of the training was to kind of try to understand where all students are, are coming from. And to try to understand that the way that you address students or, you know, making assumptions about students might kind of create a barrier between supporting, between talking things out and working with them. So we actually role-played some circles. And it's a very basic concept, but I think that it doesn't always come naturally for everyone who's working in these roles or working with students. But it's giving everyone an opportunity to talk, having a goal in mind of what we as a team or as a circle would like to accomplish. So I think one of the things that came out of the training was we all talked about, how do we want to implement this in our buildings? And I think it's going to look different K through twelve. I also think getting some, getting staff on board with seeing the value of what can come out of these circles, I think, is very important. So we kind of left the training with, okay, now we need to figure out how are we going to implement in the different buildings with our students and our staff.
Thank you.
Lauren, regarding also the Stop It app, you already answered part of my question, which was, I was curious how often it's being used. So it doesn't sound like we're getting a lot of inquiries or comments. How are we making sure that our students know about this? Like, is it being mentioned at their incoming orientations as the counselors mentioning it at the beginning of the year? Do they have reminders throughout the year or anything like that?
There are things around the building, so Stop It actually provides like a promotional kit. So we have posters, we have brochures. We do send something out to students and I believe that in assemblies, they talk about it, how to access it, how to find it, what to use it for. I know counselors also have used Stop It as if you don't feel comfortable talking to me about this right now, here's a potential option, you know, to provide information. So it is, it is out there, but I like to say that I think students, for the most part, feel pretty comfortable going to their counselor or their child study team member or teacher or even their assistant principal because we certainly get a lot of reports of a variety of different things. So yeah, so, and, and it also, I think it's on our website, I mean, I think that we probably... One of the things that I think that we need to do, you know, is just be a little more assertive instead of being passive with, you know, how we're, we're getting it out there. But I would say we've had it for, I want to say, four years? And it's been kind of consistent that it's a, a slow trickle.
Okay, that's great, but it's also good to hear that our students are comfortable going to our counselors and our teachers and our administration. So that's a positive thing as well. So, any other questions?
One more, I'm sorry. Oh, Jennifer.
Sorry, I just, so some of the things, I've, I've noticed some of the things that you listed are happening in individual schools. So they're doing different things, even the, right, so even the like K-two is doing something different than, you know, PLD is doing something different than, you know, Athol McKnight. And so if something goes well at one of the schools, I know that has to do with who the folks are and what their ideas are, but if something goes well at one of the schools, is it something that we do to sort of try to replicate it at the same grade level at another school? Or the other school?
I think it is individual, you know, it's individual from, between each school because we want buildings to kind of have that buy-in that this is something we created and this is what we want to do for our building. Something like the SEL night, I feel like has happened at other places in, maybe under some different branding. There was an event a couple of weeks ago, actually, through the EWEI, was it? And it was very similar to the PLD SEL night. So there are, yeah, yes, I think that we, you know, teams will put something together and then we'll all share it out and in some cases, there is some borrowing of some of that programming. And just the, the Student Wellness Day at the high school is very successful. That's kind of a longstanding event. And I did have a conversation with some counselors at Creps and they thought, oh, this is great and I think our students could benefit from it.
Thank you.
Sure.
One more. The self-assessment grades. What we're assessing is not the atmosphere or the frequency of the reports. It's assessing the way in which the reports are developed, the way incidents are reported. Is that, could you explain a little bit?
There's actually two that relate to reporting. Let me just get there. So there's core element six, which is reporting procedure. So the school implemented the district's procedure for reporting new information on a prior report. So that's kind of like a unique sort of scenario that we don't often have. But we do have a procedure for that. And then in core element eight is the procedure for staff member reports. Okay, that's for violence and vandalism. Sorry, I think I might be missing one. Okay, no, I think that covers it. So you are in the, the, I'm happy to share out the, the rubric and what that looks like. Under each core element, there will be a few different examples of what we have to score ourselves on. And the scores are zero to three. So based on, and it gives you a very specific, like you did this all the time, you did this sometime, you did not do this at all, like how you would, how we would score ourselves.
Right, it's more, it's more so procedural in, in terms of how the school is implementing and honoring the anti-bullying bill of rights. So there's some aspects that we should be addressing, both from a preparation standpoint, but also reactively. But it's also really just assessing, you know, do you have a school safety team in place? Are you reviewing the cases? Have you identified areas that you need to address based on the feedback of the HIB cases? So it's kind of just process-oriented. Do you have anti-bullying specialists in place, some things that we're required to do?
Right, but if there's a less than maximum score, there's a roadmap clearly then for where to make some changes to improve that score for the next reporting period. I guess that's where it is.
And I'd say that some of the, because it's a self-reporting tool, I think the folks are trying to be, you know, we could, we could easily put up one-hundredths across the board, but I think there's always room for improvement, right? So I think that, I think that's kind of, depending on the nature of the school and the teams who are there, I think folks are trying to be as precise and honest as possible in terms of that self-reflection rubric in terms of what they're addressing, so.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren.
We will now move on to our superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Just a few updates today. Some of which the student representatives, as usual, stole my thunder here. But they, you know, and actually did it so eloquently, so I thank them for that. But a couple of quick updates I do want to give. I'll start with the, the advanced choir tonight, the high school advanced choir. Last week, several board members and several of the administrative team were down at New Jersey School Boards Association workshop in Atlantic City. Each year, school districts kind of, there's a, there's a portion where districts can submit the opportunity to have either their bands, their choirs perform at certain pieces of, of the segments throughout the day. So last year, our, our visual performing arts, Ms. Koppa talked to her about potentially, you know, expressed an interest in having an opportunity to highlight and showcase some of our talent. So she did submit an application and our choir, our advanced choir, members of our advanced choir, led by Mr. Allen, had the opportunity to perform. And they served as kind of the introduction to the Commissioner of Education before he engaged in the keynote. And I will say that they were outstanding. We did include some snippets and some video footage in the weekly update, this past Friday's weekly update. But I definitely want to commend our, our students for representing Hightstown High School and the East Winds Regional School District very well. I felt like a proud old grandfather watching them perform, but, but very proud moment to, to see them. Connected to that, as our student representatives shared, the high school marching band, obviously they won the state championship and I was told through some sources that this might be the first time in the school's history that we went kind of undefeated in, in the tournaments that they participated in. So huge accomplishment. For those of you who are familiar with marching band, they put in a lot of work. I feel like during the summer, you'll, you'll see the marching band consistently out there performing and prepping and, and this is a huge reward for the work that they put in. So I just want to congratulate Mr. Hall and Ms. O'Day for their outstanding commitment. And obviously our students who are deeply committed to being members of the marching band. But I definitely think this is another opportunity to highlight the performing arts program in our school district that I think is stellar and something that I appreciate the board's support with, especially during my time here as superintendent. So definitely want to congratulate our families, the boosters, obviously the leadership of Ms. Koppa, our visual performing arts supervisor, and want to continue that great work under the arts umbrella. Just a quick highlight regarding an update to location. We had talked about 268 Academy Street becoming the new home of our Buildings and Grounds Department and the Student Registration Services Department, which includes our kid care registration as well. So they made that transition, I believe, last week. So just make sure that if you're looking to register or you're looking for some information regarding facility use and so forth, it'll be 268 Academy Street, the new home for our Buildings and Grounds team, as well as Student Registration Services. The board meeting on October thirteenth, I mentioned, and I'll just reiterate that school districts in New Jersey were in the process of engaging in a field test for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, as well as the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. So during the months of October and November, we're trying on a, a new testing format, an adaptive format. And then we'll actually engage in the real testing, I guess I'll call it, in the spring as we typically do. This will enable the Department of Education to get a sense of how they can make some adjustments themselves to the test format. So that will occur beginning this week. So for students in grades three through five, the field test will occur on October twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Students at the middle school level will be November twelfth and thirteenth. High school will be this week, the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. So I said this at the last meeting, I'll say it again, I mean, we obviously, you know, the, the, I'm not a huge proponent of a lot of standardized testing for students, but it's a necessary component of where we are. This go-around is more so, I don't want students to think that they don't need to put their best foot forward to complete this field test. However, the, the main purpose for this is really formatting of the assessment to ensure that when students actually take it in the spring, we believe that it's appropriately designed for them to, to do their, their best work. So that will occur beginning this week, at least for two, two levels within the school district. 'Tis the week for Halloween. So Friday, we have our Halloween parades happening in our elementary schools. As a reminder, we have a nine forty-five start time for Grace and Rogers and Perry O'Drew. And in the afternoon, one forty-five PM, Ethel McKnight and Walter C. Black. So make sure you come out there and support our students, okay? And that'll be on Friday. Also, as a reminder, as we've engaged in in recent years, just giving folks a heads up and we'll communicate this in the near future. But we'll continue this year with our homework free holidays. If you recall, we've, we've tried to engage in some level of consistency in terms of assignments and also expectations regarding test preparation and quizzes for when students are on breaks and also just to make sure that we're creating some level of value as it relates to students spending time with family. Some of our, our students during our holidays may have religious commitments. So we've designated three... we've designated three homework free holiday opportunities. And during that time, students will not receive homework assignments, long-term projects that are due when they return to school after the break. And also on that first day that they return from the break, they will not be assigned a test or quiz on that day. And those three holidays are, are Thanksgiving break, obviously, which is coming up at the end of November, winter break and spring break. Some more to come on that. Obviously, next week, we have our fall break. That will not be a homework free holiday, just to, just to clarify, that's not part of the homework free holiday window. So we do have fall break, November third through the seventh. Students return to school on Monday, November tenth, and they may or may not have a test or quiz when they return on November tenth. So we do have fall break next week and I hope everyone has a safe fall break. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone have any questions?
Just one. The, the new facility on Academy Street, so it's fully occupied? We've moved out of the White House and?
Fully occupied. They made that transition last week. They're awaiting a few odds and ends, but the folks are, they're there. So if you need to make contact with Buildings and Grounds Department or Registration Services, two sixty, two sixty-eight Academy, Academy Street, excuse me, is the location.
Okay. And it may be premature, given the, you know, you're just announcing its opening, but the plans for the White House?
Yeah, you know, it's a good question. We, we have had some discussion with that. We realize that there is a transition that needs to occur and we have not made any immediate decision because we realize there's still some, there's still some pieces there that we need to have be retrieved and have access to at the White House. But I, I do want to engage the board in, in the near future regarding some plans for the facility, the space, not the, not the biggest space in the world, but, you know, we've made the decision, it does not appear to be cost-effective to engage in any significant upgrades. So the, the plan was to see how we could, one, hold on to it for a moment for some storage purposes and then make a determination regarding what it would look like if we were to remove it and create some additional parking. That was kind of the, the next step that, that we thought was relevant. But more to come on that in the near future.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we will now move on to our first opportunity for board member comments. Any board members have a comment? Okay, we will now move on to our first opportunity for public comment. Any members of the public wish to speak, make a comment? Okay, thank you. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and if you could please also write it on the clipboard to the left of the podium. And to get the speaker to work, the little button on the bottom right will turn the red light on and there you go.
Thank you. Ronald Schechter and two Exeter Court, East Windsor, New Jersey, oh eight five two oh. We have two children who are now grown up. They're adults. They're in their thirties. They went to the school district here and they turned out pretty good. So we're grateful for that. And every time we think of the school district, we're, I'm pleased. Are you pleased? I put her on the spot. She's, she's somewhat pleased.
I see the following has changed completely.
Yeah. Yeah. I could talk.
We've lost your, we've lost your mic.
Is the red light?
There we go.
There we go.
My daughter was very involved here. Both of our children were. She was in the choir. She was played field hockey. And, and all the plays, she really enjoyed that and we enjoyed watching her, seeing her in those, those events. But she was subject to some quite severe bullying, which has had a lasting effect. It's not things that you can get over easy or just, you know, let it wash by. And I asked her if she wanted to come tonight. We had no idea that this presentation was going. There we go. So that's that. I'll go on to another, the real reason why we're here. I had heard from a neighbor who is somehow hooked in with the education community in Mersey County. And he said that the district here spent, I think, eight hundred thousand or over eight hundred thousand on an illuminated scoreboard for the athletic field. Is that correct? Am I coming here with bad information? It's true. All right. So we're concerned about that and I think there is room for improvement in math and reading scores again. And anybody not? Yes, no? Okay. And then we wonder why, why was this money spent on something questionably, whether I feel or somebody else feels it was necessary or a nice amenity. But we, I'm, we're not happy about it. I'm not happy about it. A couple of other people, of course, they're not here, are happy about it. And I don't know much about the, the why, the how. Was the money donated? Was it set aside by this group of people as a capital expenditure in your budget? How does that work? So I would love to hear from any of you about that. Anything else? All right. That's the show for today. Thank you for your attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Schechter.
Yes.
What I'm going to suggest we do is either I can reach out to you or our business administrator, Paul Todd, can reach out to you to regarding the pricing for scoreboards for athletic fields, so you get a sense of. So I don't want people to think that the scoreboard was on the shelf for eight hundred thousand dollars. There's, there's a process connected to labor related to that. So I think it will be helpful. We had a scoreboard that was not functional. And if people don't really value that, that's fine. But when you're in a game, we have multiple students participating in athletics at the high school. And when the scoreboard doesn't work, that's a problem. It may not be at the top of the list for people, but it's something that we needed to rectify. So, you know, the district did made, made the decision to invest in a new scoreboard. I think that scoreboard that we had before, I, I don't even know how old that was, but it just, and it doesn't really matter how old it was. It just wasn't functional and we attempted to repair it on a number of occasions. So I think it will be helpful for you just to get a sense of the pricing of what that entails. And it, it was not a gift. It, it was something that was part of our, our, our capital reserve budget, but it was something that in order for us to be a group four high school that's competing against schools across other districts, we need to have a functional scoreboard. So we have your contact information. So I'm going to follow up to this meeting. So, so you have a sense of the pricing and just, in, in the name of transparency, you have a sense of what, what that reflects. All right? Okay, okay.
Thirteen years ago, maybe Bob, if you remember this, was a school band, instruments. Same thing where the instruments have fallen, some of them beyond repair. We had the room packed with about a hundred students speaking for an hour. Very quickly though, and not long after that, they refurbished, supplied new instruments. So I'm glad to see that when these things happen, you're able to do something.
Definitely, definitely we'll do that. And you don't have to worry about instruments. We, we, the board is very supportive, ensuring that our students have functional, up-to-date instruments. So as you heard tonight, marching band, first place. Students are performing, you know, so we are investing in what we think is a part of a comprehensive educational experience, but we'll definitely follow up. All right? Thank you. But was Bob here? No, my, my. No, I'm, I'm glad that you, look, we, we have a very supportive board. I'll, I'll leave it at that. And, and the arts is one area that Bob is very, a strong advocate for, that we've continued to grow, especially since COVID, to be quite honest with you. So we have huge participation and, and our students are performing at a high level.
Thank you. Okay, let me move on and see, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, there being none, we will now move on to old business. We have listed on here. Nope, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is what happens when I don't put my computer glasses back on. You're right. We are, we'll be moving into an exec session and we'll be about So, right here, we have our 2025 committee meetings that are left for the remainder of this year. And we still have a follow-up on student achievement. Did anyone have any questions about student achievement? From, uh, from the NJSLA, from last, any follow-up questions?
Wrong question. So, we're on, um, old business. And we were talking about, um, any follow-up questions on the NJSLA report? Okay, Paul, if we can still leave that on there, because I didn't have as much time to review it and I've started writing down some questions. I'll just bring them up again next time, or, okay, all right. Okay, so, next is our first opportunity for board member comments. Um, before we start, though, I would like to take a moment and ask, um, some of the new, some of our, our school board members and our administrations attended the New Jersey School Board Association's workshop uh, last week, and I wanted to have some of the members, the board members that attended, to maybe provide one or two highlights of what they took away, or anything they learned that was exciting or concerning coming down the pike. Very quickly, very succinctly, let's maybe highlight some of our experiences.
All right, so first, I'd like to say thank you to the business office and administration for working everything out and allowing us to be able to go. Um, the workshops were very educational and we had quite a few of meet and greets, um, with vendors. And the nights were topped off with team-building experiences, which I think we all enjoyed. Um, but one of the highlights for me, which the superintendent mentioned, was our, um, high school, uh, Hightstown High School Advanced Choir. They sang three songs. And before they sang, I actually had an opportunity to speak to the executive director of the NJSBA. And he talked about how our choir, um, beat out, I don't want to say beat out, our choir was chosen out of hundreds of auditions and tapes, and just to know that, you know, they were there and they sang their hearts out, and they were beautiful. And some people were just in tears, some people stood up and was clapping, and it was, it was such a breathtaking moment. Um, truly appreciated that. And then afterwards, he just turned around and looked at me and he was like, I see why they were chosen. So that was definitely a proud moment. Um, the, uh, the next thing was, um, I got a chance to attend David Rubin's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Where are we, where are we, how we got there, and what's next? That was really interesting to see, um, the evolution of it all. And to know that, uh, Mr. Rubin and our, um, you know, our, our, the people behind us really know what they're talking about and really know what they're doing. So that was pretty interesting. And then, um, I did get a chance to also attend AI-generated mathematics study guide So, um, I had a couple of workshop. My favorite was the woman leadership workshop, how we had to embrace and engage and lift each other up to be able to serve our kids and our community. Uh, but I'm really thankful that I got to enjoy that.
Thank you. Any thoughts, Bob?
I also attended the, um, discussion by David Rubin on the, um, DEI and the background. I'm a law geek anyway, and, um, really liked his review of the evolution back from, um, Supreme Court cases and legislation going back decades to where we are today with executive orders and the uncertainty that those executive orders, um, bring to us in our decision-making as a district. Because it's not based in law. So, that was very informative. The, um, other sessions I attended, also my geek self attended and was very, um, impressed with the secretary, um, Commissioner of Education, um, who spoke during the, during the, um, sessions and the legislative panel, where they had, uh, two senators and two assembly people, um, speaking in different sides of, uh, different educational issues. And the Department of Education panel, I managed to catch the back end of the, um, uh, panel of, uh, people from the, uh, Department of Education. There was one other one, too, that had a, an element having to do with, um, I'm sorry, it escapes me now, but there were two people speaking to the, not AI, I'm sorry, it escapes me. Uh, were you in that? No, no, the other one with a, a couple of people speaking about some new standards that were gonna be, um, coming out in the next, um, couple of weeks, actually. But if I remember it, I'll jump back in. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Yeah, there were a lot of great sessions this year, and unfortunately, there were a lot of conflicting. I had to keep paring down what I was attending. Um, but some of my, obviously, yes, absolutely, our Hightstown High School Advanced Choir. I was one of those folks that were brought to tears, but what, I was always proud, um, always proud of all of our students and what they're, they accomplished. But what was so wonderful to hear, New Jersey School Board's, um, employees were sitting in front of us, in the row directly in front of us. And the oohing and aahing that came out of, like, that just contributed more to the tears in my eyes because I was so proud of them. And they were up there, they performed beautifully, and they're so professional, and they're, they're, I, I can't say anymore about it cuz it's just absolutely amazing. Um, I also, I attended all of the keynotes. One was the, was Mary Ben Ari, and for all of our students who may be listening to this, I, if I should've mentioned sooner for our students reps to bring it back. Um, she was one of the keynote, she's a Grammy Award winner performer in the hip-hop category. Um, she performs violin, though, so that, those two don't typically go together. But she has taken her gift and she brings programming, um, education programming into schools all over the world, actually, but mostly in, in our country. But she brings, she comes in and she inspires and engages students to become, you know, strive more academically and all of that. So, if anyone can check her out online, she's really great. Um, I attended a district, uh, onboarding session, which also inspired me and gave me some additional ideas to add to our board discussion retreat tomorrow. Um, uh, I attended a workshop, was it an architect workshop? This is kind of, I usually attend sessions about student achievement and equity and all of that. But I kind of went outside my comfort zone this year and attended a regulatory workshop. Um, so I learned more about the process that's involved behind the scenes for our capital project. So, it was a great sneak peek into Paul's work and of one facet that he manages for our district. I missed out on some other sessions, but I did manage to catch the end of one of the closed sessions cuz they had filled up, I snuck in at the end. Um, but it was about, um, addressing early literacy. And you'll hear more about that later when I report about curriculum focusing on, um, that K, K through, not K through three, but even catching them as soon as we possibly can. So, there were a lot of great sessions about that this year. So, um, I hope this report was helpful cuz I thought it would be great to hear more about what we take part in when we go away to workshop every year, and we learn so much. And we bring it back here, um, to share with other board members and put it into the work that we do, um, for the district. So, okay.
Can I jump back in?
Yes, absolutely.
And amend my report? Yes, the other, uh, session that I thought was really important, and there, there were two presenters from the Department of Education, the state DOE. And they were talking about new standards coming, which we will all be hearing about shortly, I think, having to do with, um, informational literacy. So, they were talking about what these standards would mean across the entire curriculum from, um, language arts, English language arts, to math, the science, social studies, visual performing arts, world languages, across the whole curriculum, how this, these new standards will emphasize, um, a culture of students questioning sources, questioning, basically their approach to gathering and reporting information and, um, sourcing that information appropriately. So, there's a lot to come in that arena, and it's, I think, K-12 impact. So, it's gonna have a very broad impact, but I think it's, uh, very necessary, given where we are today with, um, the, the state of, uh, internet, social media, and different places where people are getting, um, misinformation. But, uh, preparing our students beyond what they're seeing today, preparing them for the deluge of information that will be, um, coming long after they've left our schools. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Yes, that was actually one of the ones, I can't believe that I forgot it. I was in that session, and there's a lot of information there. That, I am grateful that you remembered that one because that was definitely one of my highlights.
I would try downloading, uh, there were lots and lots of materials from some of these sessions, so I'll try, I'll do my best to download what I can.
Yeah, I will as well, and we could share out to the board.
Share to the board, yeah.
Okay, any other board member comments beyond that? Okay, there being none, we'll have our second opportunity for public comment. Any members of the public wish to speak? No? Okay, at this time, then, we'll move on to a number, wait, actually, I'm sorry. I needed to report out on, this is where I'm gonna use that space to report out, curriculum committee. Yes, okay, so, um, we had curriculum committee this evening, um, and I took some notes. Um, so, we talked about universal, the universal screening mandate for New Jersey, and also, um, the types of schools that our graduates attend after they leave us. Um, so, in New Jersey, we have a tiered system of supports, and that screening typically is mandated to happen twice a year um, for K through three. And actually, in district, we have decided to do it three times a year because it will provide us beneficial information that we could actually, actionable information that we could use throughout the year to make adjustments to how we're teaching students, um, overall and individually because it will provide valuable information. Um, one of the statistics that Sandy had mentioned, uh, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't Sandy, I, I can't remember who mentioned it. Fifty, I think it was Christine, yes, Christine said, um, fifty percent of kindergarteners who are behind can actually catch up. Well, once those students hit third grade, their ability to catch up drops five percent. And I'm sorry, this has not happened, I just got a little emotional, I'm sorry, my apologies. Um, that's a big deal. So, the fact that we are looking at this data and we are gonna do our best to rectify this early on is, speaks volumes. Um, so, the test involves, the, the, the screening involves phonemic awareness, phonics and decoding, oral reading deficiencies and comprehension, and the way we're going to do that is with our existing STAR test that we have done in the past, um, which have been early literacy and reading, but we're actually adding on a phonics component to that, and also the DIBELS test. Um, so, basically, we're scoring below level at level above. And, um, again, we're going to add a December mid-year testing so that we can use that actionable data to make some changes um, where, where students specifically need, where they're missing in detail. So, there was a more detailed information, but that's just pretty much the brunt of it, the, the summary. Um, as far as where, um, there's been questions about where our students are attending after they leave us. Um, so, in 2025, students have applied to 189 colleges and universities, um, and in 36 different states. Um, and at this point, um, we have forty percent attending a four-year college, forty-five percent attending a two-year college, um, mostly being Mercer, but some are also attending Middlesex or Brookdale. Um, and out of that 189 colleges and universities, um, will, they'll be attending 73 of those different schools. We talked a little bit about behind the scenes, what our councils are doing. Um, basically, the recommendation, for the most part, is for students to apply to five to eight schools with a mix of different types of schools based on their academic profile, their financial concerns, their backstories, and their extracurriculars. There was some mention also that, um, the schools they would be attending are varying, if they are changing back for the SAT test optional, um, or if they're requiring test results or not. Many of them are returning back to the test. Is mandated to have those scores sent over, but there's still some schools out there where it's, they are not asking for it. Um, at the moment, we have 60 visits planned for the fall, where colleges will come and visit us in district. And they'll talk about their trends and can speak to the individual students. And from what I'm understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, students can speak to the admission folks, um, individually in the counselor's office. Their interviews can take place often, um, on-site here in district, and sometimes even a decision will be made that day. Um, so, that's really exciting to hear. Um, especially when, you know, being in school and participating in their academic rigor that leaving school to go look at schools for the future can sometimes, you know, be, you know, not productive for them cuz they're missing class time. Um, we also have college flair, college fairs, um, we have district bus trips going to other college fairs. And pretty much, yeah, that's pretty much it for now. If I missed anything, well, Sandy's giving me the nod that we looked good. Okay, I have one other update, just give me just a moment here to pull it, pull it up. Um, okay, so, this is a late committee report. On September 8th, we had a wellness committee meeting, and our, uh, local HUCIPAG came in to speak. Gloria Peniflor and Ina Sanchez came in to speak about HUCIPAG and give some updates. Um, so, for folks who don't know, um, each public school district in New Jersey is required by law to have a CPAG, which is a special education parent advisory group. And this is where, in which family members and caregivers of special education students in district can participate by providing feedback. Um, so, the local CPAG is parent-led, and it advocates for special education families within the, the district. Um, our student services department oversees the special education programs and services. Our school administration makes decision on policies, resources, and programs, and us as the Board of Ed approves the policy and budget. But the CPAG is an opportunity for parents to get involved, support each other, learn from each other, um, advocate for each other, and provide information. So, HUCIPAG is what we call our local, so it's Hightstown East Windsor Special Education Provi-, uh, Parent Advisory Group, provides direct input to the district, ensures parents have the necessary tools to effectively advocate for their children. And they advise on matters that pertain to the education, health, and safety of children within the district. Um, they collect data from their parent-only meetings, um, conversations they have at PTO meetings, after-school activities. And they also, um, send, uh, send out a parent survey every year. Um, all the information that they receive is kept confidential and anonymous. Um, they do share information, but it's not provided in a way that could ever trace back to anyone in particular, um, to, you know, ensure that anonymity. Um, they've provided the results of the survey and the, and how they use it to create an actual plan going forward. Um, there was a lot of detail there, so you can find all of that information on, on their website and their Facebook and Insta pages. They also spoke about what a FAP is, or Free and Appropriate Public Education, which is very critical in the special education world. Um, they spoke up about upcoming events they're having, and they also spoke about, very proudly, how they helped implement the New Jersey, the new New Jersey IEP legislation, S-3982, and they provided some details about that. Um, it's basically rules that each district has to follow, um, regarding IEP or individual education programs for special education students. Um, and they also, very proudly, mentioned how last spring, they received the Friends of Education Award from the Mercer County Education Association after being nominated by our own East Windsor Educated Association. So, again, you can find more information about them on Facebook and Instagram under Hightstown East Windsor Special Education Parent Advisory Group and online at site.google.com forward view, forward H-E-W-S-E-P-A-G. Okay, that now concludes my report. And we will move on to number nine.
Tina, I have a question.
Oh, sure, sorry.
You went over the curriculum, um, thing, and you're doing this, uh, screening, additional screening. Is that the one that's mandated by the state or that's that volunteer thing? I need, huh?
It's the state, it's the mandated by the state.
So, now, instead of doing two screening, now we're doing three?
We're doing three, we're going above what the state mandate is.
Okay, so now, this information that you is, three times, that I got that. Uh, so, once we get this actual data, whichever you have, um, what is your timeframe you're looking into make some changes to the process, or how does it work? Because, you know, we've been going through this testing and screening, and we have the data. I'd just like to know what is the next step for us because this extra screen is not, we already have the actual data now. So, how do we improve on that?
Well, we have, we'll have new data because we've added the STAR phonics, um, which is, we've never done before. Um, and from what we, from what I understand, we're gonna use that new data to help zone in on those critical areas. Um, the presentation is up on the board docs, so take a look at it. There is, um, a diagram on there or a visual, visual aid for the reading rope. And it kind of, it's a very interesting visual because it talks about all the little facets of literacy that have to come together to actually make someone a good reader, fluent, and all of that. Um, so, even one of those little pieces are out of sync, then they can have trouble learning to read and being able to decode and, and all of that, becoming fluent. So, what we expect to find from this test is to help us zone in on those little areas. So, I'm think, thinking more to come, you know, let's see what happens. Sandy, do we have a date and when we'll have an update from the, are we testing in December again?
December through February is the second test, this is the baseline.
Okay. So, s, like, early to late spring, we'll have some data, so.
Let me just clarify, so, so, what is different, though, Chakruti, is this is an early literacy initiative? So, um, and it's really just talking about the, the building blocks of how students read from a phonemic awareness standpoint in particular. So, in our district, we do have foundations, which is kind of an explicit intentional way to teach reading. This kind of, um, it's in line with that to some degree. It takes, it's a little bit more granular. So, from an early literacy standpoint, it will provide information and hopefully, ear, early signs for us. So, therefore, we can kind of, um, remediate that or just establish a strong foundation for students from a reading standpoint, so they're, they're ready to read to learn as they're transitioning to third grade. So, I think in terms of what will that mean for us, we hope that it will influence our instruction. So, in terms of, um, you know, really making sure that, one, students aren't falling through the cracks, but ultimately, um, really emphasizing kind of the science of reading, which has become kind of a, a trend to some degree in, in terms of where we are from an educational standpoint. This really just serves as a universal sense of ensuring you know where students are as it relates to those building blocks of, of reading. So, it, to some degree, it may be more of the same in terms of doubling down. But in, it, to some degree, though, it, it may actually enlighten some areas that we, um, or some students that we believe that we need to tap into under the general education umbrella because they just haven't been taught to read. Before it comes across as being like, oh, what's going on here, when the student's in third grade and they're struggling, some of that may just be because they haven't been taught how to engage in that process. So, we hope that it will be, uh, just more information for us to leverage instructionally within the classroom. That's really what we want, teachers to be able to have that information and then turn that around somewhat in, in a more inefficient manner, um, to support students. And it's really in line with our, our goals for students to be able to read, you know, when they transition from K-two to, to three, five. So, um, so more to come. It's kind of new for us to some degree, but some of it is in line with what we've already been doing. Alright?
Thank you.
I actually thought of a question now. So, being we're testing fall, mid, like, mid-wintertime and in the spring, at each step of the way, I expect, I suspect that we will be looking at that data and making adjustments as we move throughout the year. I'm correct? Okay. Just wanted to click, cuz that helped, that, I think that's what I gathered from in there, but I didn't portray that during my.
Which is consistent with the STAR, how we should interpret the STAR, it falls in line.
But we're already making adjustments because we saw the results from last test assessment. And we are already going to be using aggressive approach to teach our kids so we can. so we can meet the minimum requirement.
And that's when you're adding the new piece.
This is just an additional tool that we'll be utilizing, is that my understanding? Because they should be already thinking of a new way to teach our kids. We saw the results from last assessment, his results.
Just so we clear what you, this, the, the, the assessment results that were just presented at the last meeting are really three-twelve, grade three-twelve, this is more of a K-two initiative. So in fairness, you didn't get the data connected to this. Now, this serves as a foundation and a springboard for where we believe students are going in their trajectory. But, um, I just wanna make sure that we're kind of talking about the same thing. So if you're referring to the NJSLA data, is it related to it? Sure, we believe that this will serve as a building block, but this is specifically geared towards K-two.
K-two, too.
Transition, okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, yeah. Okay, we'll move on to item nine.
Motion to approve routine items by exception. Having read the materials received, I move that the board approve the routine agenda items as submitted. Item A, staffing for 10-27-25. Item B, HIB report from October 13, 2025. Item C, approved parent donation to, uh, Hightstown High School. Item D, technology recycling badge number 64. Item E, approved travel and related expenses. Item F, approved new field trip sites for upcoming trips. Item G, out-of-district placement. Item H, transportation jointure. Item I, board meeting minutes approval for October 13th, 2025. And item J, bill list of October 27th, 2025.
Second. Any questions?
Just a comment on item C. The, um, donation to the robotics club, uh, to Hightstown High School, looks, they look like items that are going to be used. This is obviously a, a parent with, uh, in- interest in robotics, in the robotics, uh, team. So, that'll be much appreciated, I'm sure.
I wanted to piggyback off of that. Um, I got a chance to see the robotics team at the Science Day last year, and, you know, they're, they're really good. So it's nice to see that, um, that the community sees that and that they're donating. Um, but I, I did also have a question, though, on 12-F. Um, the trip, the field trip is to Chick-fil-A. I'm sorry, nine, nine F. So I don't mean to add stuff to the agenda. Um, they're going to Chick-fil-A, is that for lunch? Like, what is that? I don't, I don't quite understand.
Yeah, so this is the community-based instruction program related to our students who are in our, uh, self-contained special education setting here. So, so part of their curricular experience is to get out into the community. Um, I believe this will be part of one of their outings. I would imagine that this is probably where they're gonna eat, but also engage in some skills, whether it's change, how much is the order, that's, that's kind of the life school component associated with that. Alright?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Pull the board, please.
Ms. Boojly.
Yes.
Ms. Concepcion.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Laverdy.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Ms. Lands.
Yes. That concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful day.